It was like, I didn't hear my pet little dog sound, that sound right there. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. Time now is 7:00 PM. I'd like to begin with the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any public comments? Take them, correspondence?
None.
I'll get you the welcomes. Well, I could give you the welcome now. Kenny Kessler, congratulations for your first meeting on the Board of Selectmen. Glad to have you. I know it's going to be kind of a, an interesting learning curve.
That's for sure.
Hopefully we'll, we'll make it a lot of fun. Now, as I recall, we may have an issue with one of these minutes in the chat. So first off, so with public hearing minutes, we did not have a quorum. So there's really, I don't know that we can approve, we listened to one person. I don't know how we can approve the minutes without a quorum. So I don't think there's any way to dispose of this, except probably table it indefinitely. Okay, so I move that we consider the, excuse me, I move that we table indefinitely the consideration approval of Board of Selectmen's public hearing minutes from November 18th.
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, next up. This, I believe, was one.
Back up for one second.
Sure.
What did, what was needed for a quorum?
Uh, so we should have had at least two stuff in there for that public hearing, and I just showed up. So afterwards, we talked to the town attorney. Um, there were some questions about whether or not we actually needed a public, or excuse me, a quorum for public hearing. Right, because, but, but, because we're not doing business, but we felt that it was probably appropriate that was a, a hearing that should have. Which is, yeah, so we're gonna go ahead, um, later in the agenda, we're gonna reschedule that public hearing. So next up, uh, consideration of the Board of Selectmen's regular minutes from November 18th. Now, okay, so we were, so Brian and I are both present, so we were already able to approve those. I'd accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes from November 18th.
So moved.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye, one extension.
Extension.
Public plan works. Okay. So I'll be brief for a first select report. Yeah, obviously, this is the first, first day into our, our new year. I began with a, uh, the CCM convention today, which was, uh, it was, it was good. I mean, we go, we see a lot of people, see a lot of vendors. I know there's, uh, you know, there were a couple of good things that, you know, I was able to go to. Um, one was looking at how we, how we plan with for succession municipal government. It's kind of hard because we're a small shop. And we don't have a lot of depth in town employees, but, you know, went through and talked about some of that, which is, uh, we're always succession planning, always looking for who could be next. Um, there was a session on AI, which I opted not to go to, and I went to focus on AI people. Um, one of the things that I've been really working on for two years is a concept of a virtual town hall. Where we could do more online for our residents and, you know, the idea is that you could go to one-stop shopping at this point, find all your information very easily in one spot. You could find your, if you have sewer with us, your sewer bills, water bills, and the history of the bills. Our current programs don't give us the history of those payments, so we're way behind where we shouldn't be. Uh, and the other part is more of a consolidated billing process, because we use different billing companies for all things. Uh, and then there's the AI piece of this where we actually could have something where after hours, if somebody calls, they can get AI help. And then we can turn it back on during the day, because we're a small town, right? You want somebody to pick them up and answer again. So we're able to do that. So that's kind of the stuff we're looking at in the future. Uh, I spent some time there looking at that today. Which was, which was good. So I thought those were part of the highlights of CCM this year. There are two main things we're, we're members of like that. Well, there's three really technically. But there's Kerma, which is our insurance company, we're members. There's, uh, CCM, which is Connecticut Conference Municipalities. Um, which if you like, you can actually go get the CCMO like training, so we can talk about that. And the other is COST, Council of Small Towns. Those are the three main things. So, uh, those other two meetings for Kerma and COST are coming up in January. They're annually, so that's kind of the big picture. So I just wanted to go through that, so everybody understood. Um, other than that, well, I'll try to have a more robust report. I'm gonna try to do better about reporting this year with those. Uh, there's no old business, uh, new business. The first order is to set a new hearing date, uh, public hearing date for the changes in the transfer fees. Transfer station fees, rather, which I miss. Do we have the, uh, the overall in here that, okay, so we just have the minutes, that's fine. So what we're doing is, we needed to have a little more money collected for large sleeper sofas. The current fee was couches $25 to $35 per item. Uh, we are proposing to go $25 to $50 per item. It's gonna be 25 for a love seat and 50 for large sleeper sofas. Um, by, by, uh, our town code, and then we have to do a public hearing before we make those changes. So the plan is to set a public hearing for, uh, I believe it's, are we gonna do 6:30 again, and it's gonna be December 16th, correct?
Immediately moving.
Immediately, we're made. And that would be right before our next Board of Selectmen meeting. So with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that we set a public hearing for the proposed changes to the transfer station fees for November 16th at 6:30 PM in Meeting Room. December 16th, thank you. Immediately, we're made. You got a second? Uh, any questions about the fees or what we're planning to do? Okay, with that, I'll try mine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. I move that we table the date for a public hearing for proposed HRA or those changes. And, uh, just for the, for the session, Benny, um, I had a chance to caucus and just talk to Brian briefly. The, uh, who's the Townlike Recovery, uh, Resources Recovery Association is kind of our main like trash entity. And one of the things we do, we have, one of our ordinances really deals with HRA and how we work with them as a member in all the towns. They've made some changes now to the model ordinance that we'll need to adopt. Uh, it just wasn't quite ready to do it because he sent me the three pieces of it. We just didn't put it together in one ordinance. And the rule is 10 days prior to the hearing, we have to publish the whole ordinance. Once that happens, we can have a public hearing, at least one. And then we can vote on it, and then what happens is that ordinance will sit there for 31 days, I believe, something like that, and then it'll become a notice. Unless somebody petitioned someone to do something about it. So that's the process. We went ahead and we're gonna table this as the plan. Any further, okay, without trying minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I would accept a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $6,270.19 due to overpayment of taxes. A second? Outstanding. So, uh, this comes on a monthly basis now. We used to do it quarterly. But, uh, it was one of these things that this is money that goes back in folks' pockets. It's just as easy for us to do it. Um, if you see on the back there, you'll see, um, the various people who have overpaid slightly. And, uh, this enables the tax collector to get in. Any, uh, any discussion on the item?
Good question.
True.
Why do people in New York? Do they own property within the town?
They would either own property or a car here. There are, there are folks, um, you'll hear a lot about people who have New York plates. And we used to call them, well, now it's called capital tax recovery to go out and find them. And we, not only do we backtax them, and then they get a finder's deed, we add them to the tax roll. So we do have people here with New York plates, we pay taxes to town, and of course, we have people who pay a product tax. So that's probably where this is from.
Understood.
So. Hey, with that, I'll try mine. It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next up, okay, so this is, uh, these are town officer appointments that we're gonna discuss. And this is not, uh, boards and commissions. The plan is to do that, uh, at the next meeting when we have some, um, input from the two town parties. There are a number of people that are appointed, uh, by charter. And in this case, we have, we have four that are actually up this time. And so, um, I'll read through the four we'll plan to do with one motion when we get there. Is there any problem? We've been doing four people in motion. Um, first up is going to be Christopher Baldwin. He's our building official. It's a four-year term, uh, which is, which will go to, uh, what is it? This, the first Monday of December of '29. Melanie O'Brien, which is a two-year term, which will go to the first Monday in 2027. Uh, Tom Galliford for the civil prepared, uh, Director of Civil Preparedness, which technically now, I think it's Director of Urban Management, according to our new charter. But it's still, it's still required as a, in, in, in the state law as Director of Civil Preparedness. It's a two-year term, so that goes to the first Monday in 2027. He's also the Fire Marshal, which is a four-year term. And so that'll go to the first Monday in 2029. Uh, so those will be four appointments this time. Oh, actually, we're gonna do a fifth, I apologize. Laura Vassil's term. It's, uh, it's actually up on January 18th, 2026. What I'd like to do is include that, it's a four-year term. I would like to include that in here, and that will be, um, January 18th of 2030 would be her termination or the end of her term. So, by the way, hers is weird because it goes by, it goes by the actual date, state law, um, as what your appointment was. So those are the five individuals. Any, any discussion on them? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, uh, I make a motion that we, we, uh, reappoint the five, uh, as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, you have before you in D1. It's the, uh, 2026 regular meeting schedule. Every board is required to, uh, set their meeting schedule according to FLI in their very first meeting of the term, which is here. We did look through this and try to see if there's any, you know, holidays or anything. Is there anything that you see that jumps out?
No.
Okay. Um, Brian, you?
As long as we don't do Valentine's Day. I think that's the 14th.
Yeah, yeah. No, because that's, yeah, because that's actually, uh, in the next.
So just make notes of that.
Got it. And it looks like it's clear. 14th is clear. I'll put it, no, no meetings on the 14th. We should pass an ordinance. We'll call Brian's long.
We should.
All right. I'm gonna read the regular meeting, uh, minutes or the regular meeting dates, uh, for the record. Uh, the 2000, the proposed 2000, actually, I'll just make a motion. I move that we set the 2026 regular meeting schedule. And these are the regular meetings, the first and third, two, six of each month at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room A at the municipal center. January 6th and 20th. February 3rd and 17th. March 3rd and 17th. April 7th and 21st. May 5th and 19th. June 2nd and 16th. July 7th and 21st. August 4th and 18th. September 1st and 15th. October 6th and 20th. Uh, November 3rd and 17th. December 1st and 15th. And January 5th and 19th of 2027. Do we have, yeah, that's why we have to set a full year. That's right. Okay. Um, I have a motion of a second. Okay. Any further discussion on dates? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, also required in the, um, in the first meeting of a term is the election of an acting first selectman in the absence of the first selectman. This is part of our charter. Um, you basically, it's very clear that, yeah, something happens to me, or I'm gonna be away, and I can assign it by letter, um, that we have an acting first selectman. Um, I move that we elect Brian Turgey in the acting first selectman in absence of the first selectman. Second. Any, uh, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so, uh, next up, we have the appointments to who's the Town resources recovery authority. Normally, we report a, we, we do a primary and alternate. I have always been the, uh, primary. And I'm, I'm recommending that Brian be the alternate. So Brian, would you like to actually make some motion? And next time around, we may do.
Yep.
We've done that before, but Brian's been here for a little while, has some experience.
Absolutely.
Um, actually, I just, I guess I can make the motion for myself. I move that we appoint Dan Carter, uh, as the HRA primary and Brian Turgey in as the second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries. It's really the exact same thing with West Cog, Western Connecticut Council of Governments. Um, um, I happen to be, uh, right now, the Vice Chair of West Cog and the Vice Chair of the, uh, Houston Valley NPL, which is part of that. And I'm recommending that, you know, this time we add, uh, Brian as the second. If he's, yes, he's had some experience in them, and the next time around, we can look at that as well. Uh, so I move that we appoint, uh, Dan Carter to the primary member of West Cog and Brian Turgey in as the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next up, um, I'd like to add the agenda, add to the agenda. Discussion and approval of license plate readers for the Bethel PD.
So.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. So we'll add that to the agenda right here where we are. Chief? You're up.
All right, so, um, as you, some of you know, we've been trying to get, um, place, we've had license plate readers, first of all. We're trying to get additional license plate readers for the last couple of years. Uh, the budget got, uh, pretty cut up last year, unfortunately, so we were only able to get one. And the one we ended up going with actually is a little bit more than a year now. Um, it did not work out well for us. Um, the software didn't work. Um, it was on a different system. Um, it has some success with it. However, we found that it was down more than it was up, and we, uh, got out of our contract with the company. Um, last year, we actually, going back into doing our capital and operating budget last year now I'm talking. Uh, we have in our capital budget $25,000 for, to add plate readers. Um, we've done a lot of research to see what's out there. We found a company called Fox Safety that, um, is what pretty much everybody around us is using. Um, Newtown just, um, got them for 12. Danbury just added, I think, 32 into their community. Um, Richfield has eight. Um, Bridgeport's about to sign a huge contract with the whole city of Bridgeport, even though it's a little ways away from here. Uh, Brookfield's currently looking at the same system we are. Um, so what I'm asking for is eight cameras located strategically around town, and we're gonna try to coordinate with Danbury and Newtown, because they're the same system. So if Newtown has one at the town line going one direction, we're obviously not gonna be in the same direction. Um, they made some recommendations of about 12 to 16 different spots that we should put them. Uh, obviously, they want us to have more cameras than eight, but I think eight's a good number to start with. Uh, we budgeted 26, or 25,000. We put $25,000 in the capital budget. I'm currently asking for $26,000. We're gonna take that one camera out. Here on this page, it's probably the easiest one to read for you guys. The last one is, was just a fixed camera. We were talking about putting somewhere downtown. We're gonna take that out and I'm asking for $26,000. One of the reasons, um, I would like to report this in a timely manner is they are offering free installation. If you look, um, down to the bottom left of that same page, where the 6450 would be free installation of these cameras, because it's in the area of Danbury, Newtown. And also with it, uh, they're willing to give us a 60-day prove it or lose it, get out of the contract with them. So they're willing to install these cameras, give it 60 days, and if we don't like it, we can tell them we don't like it, get rid of it. If not, it would be a year contract, and we redo on a yearly basis. Every time we redo it, um, any software upgrades or any camera updates are a part of the package.
What's the renewal?
It would be the same price. So we could sign like a three-year contract at $26,000 a year. The first year is $26,000. So they're willing to, you know, give us a longer contract if that's what we want. Talking at price for moving forward.
That's less than the other one, right? Wasn't the other one 45? Did we put 45? Remember we were?
Yeah, it depends. There was different ones we were looking at, yeah.
No, but the last one we had, remember, we put the poll out there, we were gonna move it around.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one was 4,500 a year.
Something like, uh, no, there's, it was like probably pretty similar to this.
Yeah, this is 32.
Yeah, 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 you're right.
I'm saying this is just slightly less.
We, these are strictly leased.
What do they do? Do they guarantee replacement of these?
If you're the lease, yes. So anything that goes wrong and a camera goes out, they'll just put in the camera.
And how often do they replace the cameras with new technology?
Whenever the new ones come out, they necessarily, so if you go into a three-year contract and they have a newer version in two years, they'll replace the camera.
Do you have any money in your budget right now for these cameras?
We would put it in the capital, we would put it moving forward in the operating.
So you had $25,000 this year.
Oh, yes.
What you got? Now, what are their normal increases if you don't do a three-year contract?
Um, good question. They haven't raised the price in the last two or three years, but it's not to say they won't. Um, they are probably the biggest player in the market right now, but there is competition out there too.
Um, now, are some of these, some of these are pan-tilts, then? So like you have?
No, um, the one was gonna be, the one I took out was just gonna be a zoom camera. And we were gonna put somewhere downtown, but we took that out. Two of the.
So that was one for 3,000?
Yeah, so. Yeah. So two of them have a cam.
With live video at HQ?
Yes, correct. We have access to it. We strategically put them at two of the busier intersections so we could, you know, be able to witness traffic or accidents that may happen. Um, the other ones do take a picture as from the rear of the car, like a snapshot. So you're not allowed to take a picture of the driver of these cameras. That's one of the privacy laws. So as the car goes by, it's gonna take your picture of the back of the car, the plate.
Now, who's, who, who works with your in-car computers? Who, who's your integrator for that? Like, what, what service are you with?
Oh, we're with, uh, Motorola.
So you're with Motorola?
Yes.
And this'll interface like with the computer? So it only goes to dispatch?
No, um, so we have an in, we have in-car LPRs. It's a company, and this, I don't know, to start with, for my time, it actually ends up between Bethel, Reading, and Danbury, but somehow the servers in Reading. Um, and that system is, the system, we tried to get the other fixed one on it, and they couldn't get. The Reading system was so outdated, they couldn't get the updates to do it, so we ended up having to pay for it, the service out of Texas.
So you just rely on dispatch to get them, the information will come right into dispatch when these things go on?
Or, or in the laptops of the cruiser.
Oh, so it will just interface with that?
Or on our phones, like admin phones. It, it's unlimited. You look somewhere in this, Brian, um, this is unlimited licenses. In other words.
So like if you use leads, it'll interface with leads, and it can send the information to leads of whichever company you're with. And they're guaranteeing that, that there'll be no issues with.
Oh, yeah.
Interface with, you know, because you remember the old captain systems and stuff like that, that were a disaster.
Um, and like I said, it's, all the towns around us, and the state police, the state police have been using this company already. So it's not only just us, this, you know. I hate being the guinea pig and doing something new without other people having the experience with it. Uh, Bearfield's been using them for a couple of years now, very successful. I've been reaching out to all these places.
But this is gonna be used mostly for criminal offenses and investigations.
Oh, yeah.
We're not just going after unregistered.
No, 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 no.
Yes. Yes.
This is justice. There's a crime, a wanted person.
Yeah.
Silver alert?
Yeah. Yeah, lurch, the plate has to be entered into the system for that, the alert does. So in other words, stolen car, silver alert, this child, car wanted in armed robbery. We have to physically enter that plate into the system before we're gonna do the.
So it doesn't draw off?
Oh, it draws off every.
So NCIC and Collect gets sucked, gets sucked into the system too?
Connect in NCIC and Collect.
Oh, that's neat.
Yeah.
That's amazing. Four years, and technology's changed since.
Wait, wait, you see the.
Now I know why they called me a dinosaur before I left.
Wait, you see the new body cameras that can translate in 15 different languages?
Oh, you can talk into your camera and it'll talk for you? Uh, that's, that's actually a good thing.
Yeah.
There was a good conversation with language bearers, you know, communicating with one another.
The technology's.
That's awesome. And you already kind of have your streets picked out.
Well, not, we probably have, obviously, in front of Target, that's a busy area. Um, and like I said, we, we have the maps of Danbury and Newtown, so we're gonna integrate them with them. In other words, Newtown has a camera facing one way on 302.
Yeah.
We'll have one facing the other way.
We dodging town that way.
Yeah, so we can get each other's, and, um, it's not gonna cover the whole town 100%, but I don't think, I think this, this is what's pretty much what we budgeted it for. I mean, ideally, I'll let that 16, but I think eight is a reasonable start and see how it works out.
And I guess my last question will be for our attorney. There's no issues with lawsuits or anything like that pretending, pertaining to these cameras?
I agree that contracts are not really completely clear, but it looks like they take pictures of just like the plate itself.
Yeah. The rear of the car. So a car will go by, it'll pick the snapshot of the car. And then it maintains the list for a little while, and you can't just go searching up like, um, things. And actually, there's talk, uh, legislationally to stop, uh, FOI requests. In other words, like, if you just wanted to FOI all our data from a certain camera.
Sure.
So the, the state legislature's already working on making a lawsuit to do that, to protect the public, so to speak.
But to stop private investigators from the police, have you do their work for them?
As far as we're concerned now, we, we could deny that anyway, but there would have been some more
Sure.
strong, you know, stuff behind it, so. That was what actually, was one of the things Sean used to talk about last meeting we had last week.
Okay.
No, I'm good with it as long as we're not using it for just, for enforcement.
No.
The ones on the cars are used for that. That's why I have.
Yeah, no, totally. I mean, same but different, if that makes sense. And that's why, one of the reasons, I don't know if you got a chance to read the first three pages of this. Um, and then, you know, they're more than willing to come, you know, in front of the board of finance, the next meeting, and answer any questions that they have too, because they've been doing this for a long time. They, they know what the concerns are out there. There's a lot of, you know, many, yeah.
When you get them maybe in ways to check it out, I'd like to see how that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Works.
Absolutely.
Could they be, uh, they can be relocated fairly easy?
These are more fixed, and so they do have a version. If this works out, then we could possibly get a couple of the movable ones, and that would be more for like an investigative purpose. We're looking at a certain, you know, drug dealer in a certain area or something, or whatever you may need, but, you know. These are more for, you know, the busier areas.
Or hardwired to like a telephone pole.
Yes, yeah, or their own pole. Um, their cost, the, the free installation includes their own pole. It's, it's cheaper if they could put it somewhere that's already existing, but they actually included in that cost doing it that they have to install their own pole. And I think the 60-day thing is a great thing to take them up on. They were just at 30, and I got back to 60.
Wha- what happens if it's vandalized? Do they cover it?
That's a good question. I'll find out about it.
Probably, probably you're trying to buy insurance.
Our insurance covers that?
That we have to check on. Again, we have to see the contract and just see.
Yeah, I, that's a good question, Brian. I'll find out though. I, I, I'll call the guy tomorrow and I'll ask him my question.
I mean, we could always approve attending Melanie's satisfactory review.
Everything, everything.
This contract and the.
Yeah, yeah. I don't get it.
Okay.
So before we do, um, it talks about that the company recommends every community perform regular audits. How often is that happening?
Oh, well, so the NCIC and Collect, the state, they constantly do audits on our system, so I know the, I know Brian knows this because he's been with us for all those years. So NCIC and Collect is like the federal and state database that has everybody's registration, license, if you're a wanted person. And that's what's connected to this. So they, the state performs audits, consequently makes sure that we are using the system legitimately. The dispatchers, all the police officers. Because we have access to this in our car computers already, and dispatchers obviously have it inside the building. So what that prevents ourselves from doing is just running out your name to see if you're wanted, just because we might do it. In other words, we have to have a reason. Uh, we, you know, um, you're a suspect in the crime, then it gives us a reason to run you out. Uh, we just can't randomly, you know, run a plate because, oh, that, that woman looks kind of cute. I'm gonna run her license plate out, see if I can find out who she is or where she. That's a big, big no-no. That's why they constantly audit us, audit us and that stuff.
A lot of guys, they've lost their jobs.
Yeah, you lose your job.
Yeah, you get certified. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, another question. It says that Flock does not presently have a contractual relationship with DHS agencies. Does that mean that they are considering it in the future?
I don't think so. So Department of Homeland Security?
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
That's what they talk about.
Yeah, so, um, I know some of the concerns were more like with ICE, with command. So. So we have law in Connecticut that we're not allowed to assist them or any kind of ICE inquiries or anything like this. We're not allowed to conduct in Connecticut. If they called up or they wanted into our system, the answer is no. And that's uh, the term under the bill.
The trust.
The trust act.
The trust act.
Yeah, correct. So the trust act would prevent us from having that happen in Connecticut.
So is this the kind of thing that's similar? I am talking easily ten years ago. Um. My daughter. Was in Newtown. And got pulled over because her license plate. Dinged or something that she hadn't. Registered, something like that. There was something with, with insurance and.
Yeah.
She said, oh, but I got the form and I thought, oh, okay, forgot it. Put it away.
Yeah, but that's happened a lot of people.
It was, it was, is this that kind of?
Yes, but no. So tho- those are the ones that we have currently on our cruisers that drive around. I don't get two cars that have them. And actually, one of them doesn't even work. So old it doesn't work anymore. So really only have one operational right now. And you'll see them like on the roof. They just look like these types. They're both plate readers. But these were not alert us every time there's an unregistered car. Else we'd be going crazy all day long with the alerts. Um, so those are the ones will sit on the side of the road. They'll hit it alert that either your car's unregistered, your insurance expired, or if he's stolen or wanted person too, but. Um, that's, that's that. We've been using those for years.
Okay.
Um, same but different, if that makes sense?
No, it does.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Um, I move that we recommend to the board of finance up to not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars in capital not recurring for the purchase of the flock cameras, eight of them. And um. You know, the final contract be approved by the town attorney.
And I, and I'll have, I'll have a more formal call from them for the, the board of finance.
Okay, twenty-six thousand.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, chief. Thanks for, you know, taking the time to actually put it all.
Yeah, and Nick from the company, I'm sure if you need, do you have any further questions? Um, reach out to Matt to get the answers for him.
Just what you got, though, I really would like to see.
Oh, absolutely.
How they interface. That's great.
Yeah. And that's a pride of technology.
Yeah, yeah. Compters.
Yeah.
I remember when we used to handwrite all our. I'm serious. We handwrote all our reports and they had the administrative assistants typing for us. It was crazy.
My hand would be everybody in the show.
Yeah, if I paid a burglary report and you would kind of cross something out red. Were you doing?
Okay.
Executive session.
So next up, um, we're going to do an executive discussion, excuse me. And we're going to consider.
Thanks, Steve.
Approve of the clerical contract. Thanks, Steve. We'll go into uh, executive session, um. In accordance with F L I. Um. Do we have a section?
I have a section with the personal.
Okay, for first time there. Um, okay, so I do have a question. John Shea, you're up. You know, before we go into exactly, I don't know yet, I just want to ask. John Shea, are you there? Front row.
He is me. Yes, I'm just, I'm new to Google, so I am here.
No problem. Uh, okay, so we have, we do have um, uh, Jolene from the clerical union. Um, is it normal? Do we invite her in on the executive session or do we discuss it amongst ourselves and then come out? How does that work?
Uh, normally you would discuss it amongst yourselves and Ms. Drucker would not be invited into the executive session.
Okay. Um, Jolene, if, if you would, just kind of hang on. I don't imagine it being a long discussion. Uh, so what I'm going to do is uh, I make a motion that we go into executive session, uh, inviting in uh, John Shea, our counsel. We also have Melanie O'Brien, our town council. Brad Haring, who was on the negotiating committee, and Mary Churchill, who is our recording secretary. I think I got everybody. Uh, with that, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're at executive session at seven thirty-five. If you would, uh, go ahead and hit the view now.
Mary, do you have the ability to put Jolene in the waiting room?
I will try. You left the meeting apparently.
Okay.
All right, hold on, let me stop.
Okay, uh, we are, I called the meeting back to order out of executive session. Time now is eight P M. Um, we're going to have one motion here. Just want to make sure I got this. Okay, um, I move that we ratify the clerical contract as presented. And give Dan Carter the ability to do all that's necessary to enact the contract.
Second.